Thank you for waiting. Welcome to the first of three ACP virtual town hall meetings regarding our consolidation with AAPC or potential consolidation. I'd like to introduce to you the other members of the executive committee first and as well as introduce myself. And then we'll do a few housekeeping items and then we'll jump right into hearing the questions that those of you who are watching today have before we go into the questions that have been submitted in advance because we feel like if you're going into trouble to be here with us, we should talk to you first. We can't see you, you can see us, so we will leave that in a minute. And many, many thanks to John Roach in the office in Atlanta for making sure all this happens. I'm Amy Green. I'm currently the Chair of the Board of ACP from 2018 to 2019. I'm the Director of Spiritual Care at the Cleveland Clinic in Cleveland, Ohio. And that might be all you need to know right now. You can ask me questions if you like. I will let the others introduce themselves. Melissa, do you want to go next?
Sure. I'm Melissa Walker-Luckett and I am Chair-elect of the Board of Directors. I will begin January 1 of 2020. And I am an ACP certified educator and manager of clinical pastoral education programs at Children's Health Children's Medical Center Dallas. So, welcome to our town hall. I look forward to hearing from you.
And I'm Linda Wilkerson. I am the ACP Board Secretary-Treasurer. That, those two positions became one as of the January of this year. And I am in Dallas, Texas at Parkland Health and Hospital System. I'm the Director of Pastoral Care here and one of our certified educators. And I'm glad to be on this call with you and hope that we can help answer any questions and talk about this possible consolidation.
Great, thanks. So there's a couple of housekeeping things that all these town meetings, town hall meetings will be recorded and they will be posted on ACP's YouTube channel. So anybody who you want to tell about it, who misses it, should see it later. Everyone who attends is encouraged to submit their questions using the Q&amp;A icon at the bottom of your screen. As I said, John is in the office there helping us to collate and moderate the questions. And don't worry if we don't get to your question because we will follow up with you after the meeting. You can also send your questions directly to webmaster@acpe.edu. You can visit the ACP website for more information. On the homepage, there is a link to all the key communications that we've had so far regarding the consolidation as well as a set of FAQs. And we have been publishing several things about this. It's been going on for a while. So I don't know, I don't know if I need to give a brief history of AAPC. I think most of you, I might wait and see if the people on the call need that and I might, we'll just see how that goes. We also have a list of questions, as I said, that are already submitted, but we'd like to start with those of you who are live joining us. Who would like to go first?
At this point, nobody submitted any questions using the Q&amp;A feature at the bottom of the screen.
Okay.
So maybe we want to start with some of the questions already submitted. Oops, hang on. We have our first question. How many AAPC members will be transitioning?
Well, we don't know that. That's a great question. I think that the members they have right now, it's about 1,100. And as I understand it, no one really expects that many people to come on over because people have been dropping, since they quit certifying and people don't need certification anymore to practice, the membership, the idea has been that a lot of people are sort of retiring and moving on and not renewing. So I don't think anybody expects that number. We don't have an exact number of who would because they're not going to come over in a lump sum. They're gonna, it's going to be absolutely up to the individual as I understand it. Is that any of you having that?
My understanding is that as well, that the membership will be, those who want to join will do that and they will come on as individual members.
And I believe I remember them saying that they're, they bill their members for membership throughout the year. So, you know, some one month, some another month, you know, that kind of thing. And so I guess we really wouldn't know if they vote to, that they want to do this and we do too, we really won't know how many of their members come over until pretty much almost a year from now when we will see how many of those folks come over to us.
Right.
So the next question we have is from Jonathan Ball. His question is, there have been many letters from AAPC about the benefits to AAPC members. They get a streamlined way to become certified educators, equal vote, their own member categories, time and resources from the office. What are the benefits for the ACP members?
Well, hi Jonathan. One of my favorite people and I would expect really good questions from you. So thank you. I think the benefits are, the ones that I can think of off the top of my head and that we've talked about at some length and I'd love to hear from others. You're right, that seems like a lot. And in many ways, we are helping them keep an identity alive, keep a process alive that otherwise will go out of business. They are on their way out of business. What they bring to us, I believe, is that we have a common task of caring for the world in a spiritually educated and responsible and ethical way that's, that embraces a lot of the same values of inclusiveness and diversity and competency in matters of cultural difference and all kinds of things that we really share with them. And I think the world at large doesn't really understand what any of us do anyway. And I think that it's a growing trend that we need to be able to band together with other people who are working in similar fields and be stronger together than we can be apart because I think the world in general needs better spiritual care and better education. And I think we're two of the oldest organizations that have been doing this well. So I think there's a lot of cross-pollination that can go on. In terms of the, I'm going to leave it to Linda to talk about maybe some of the finance part of it. And I think Melissa maybe has more things to say about it as well. But for me, they have some really exciting opportunities that they're working on in terms of curriculum for their therapists that I think they're, they're open to modifying as a marketable skill for other kinds of caregivers who want to have beef up their spiritual care skills. I just think there's some cool ideas for cross-pollination. I also think that in terms of a resource to us for when we have students who have issues and we need, we need closer connections, we have possibilities for centers that are mostly counseling centers that could also be CPE centers. We have a few. You've got one there in Atlanta, a really good one. And there used to be more of them nationwide. I wish that we had more of those where people had counseling and chaplaincy more under the same roof because again, I don't think the public, general public necessarily even knows the difference. So I think there's some really good things. And I also want you to understand that we're not taking a financial risk. And I might switch quickly over to Linda to say more about that than I can.
Well, I mean simply, you know, so they're not bringing any debt. They're actually bringing money to us. They have about a million dollars after their expenses. And they're, the dues that their members will pay will finance whatever work they need to have done by ACP. So I don't think we're having, we're going to have any kind of negative financial impact. I personally think the biggest benefit they bring to us is in helping us flesh out the outcome that says that we're going to provide intensive and extensive, people are going to be able to have intensive and extensive education around pastoral counseling. And I don't know about you all, but, and that seems like a pretty tall order in my world. We've got so many other things going on. I don't think we really are able to do that. And I'm really looking forward to the kinds of resources, educational resources that they're going to bring to us to help us better train our, our CPE residents and interns and whoever else you, you know, you're doing CPE with. I think the other thing that they bring to us is it, and Amy was speaking some to this, having their expertise joined with ours sort of broadens, I think, the scope of what we cover and the scope of what we offer to the world, but certainly within our institutions. And so, in that regard, I think it's really a win for both of us.
One of the things that I think that they bring to us is they, is a resource and specifically the resource of people who are counselors, who have a spiritual basis and who we can actually help our families in the hospital maybe find someone outside the hospital who could do the follow-up and the longer-term care and helping them with grief or whatever it is that's going on with them after the death of a child. It could be, it could be marital counseling. So they bring a different resource that act as a referral for us that we can feel good about instead of just saying, well, I don't know, here's a bunch of places that you might want to look into. So, and not that we would do that, we would vet those. However, this is a ready group to help with that.
There's a follow-up question to that. How might any confederation, consolidation, or merger impact ACP's mission?
It's a good question. I think because of our, the hard work we've done over the last four and five years for the redesign, the commitment to keep our name, at least our acronym, but really change our name in a sense, change our identity to being the standard for spiritual care and education, it seems to me that they fit beautifully into that mission of advancing spiritual care, of being the standard in spiritual care and education. Particularly because of this, again, this new curriculum that I'm very excited about, spiritually integrated psychotherapy, because I think it has real potential for being, being modified to fit other, other professionals in the caring professions and having us be the source of that, having us be the teachers, having us be the people who coach it and disseminate it and in some ways even perhaps charge for it. I mean, I think they have a plan for trying to sell a curriculum and a training process that I think has a lot of promise. So I don't, I hope that answers your question. I'd see from Jonathan, oh, something's happening. He's got to go. Does that answer the question?
Yep, I think so. So, and then a follow-up would be, will AAPC have access to our foundation?
They can certainly contribute to the foundation as I understand it. I think that they have, I think that's right. One of you want to answer that?
Well, they have, they have funds that will go into our, into the ACP Foundation. And so, you know, they, it's, I think what's important for everybody to understand is we're not, this is not two parallel organizations. They're actually, they're joining us. They're going to be members of ACP. And so if they want to use funds, they're going to apply for funds just like everybody else in ACP does, you know, through what the foundation does, has.
Will there be a more streamlined process for ACP educators to become pastoral counselors certified by AAPC?
I want to speak to that.
Yeah, take that one, Melissa. Thanks.
AAPC stopped certifying their pastoral counselors as educators several years ago because it, for whatever reason, they stopped that. They have their reasons, I can't remember them right now.
Licensing.
Thank you. Everybody go, that's right. Everyone went from being certified pastoral counselor to licensed within the state where they practice. So certification wasn't as meaningful as the licensing. So they don't certify. And the, and I think I've gotten off the question now.
Well, we'll, we'll find a way. I don't think we know.
For us, I do, let me answer. I do know that because I live in Texas, to be a pastoral counselor, I would have to go through pastoral counseling training. I'd have to find the academic and state requirements for those. I would have to meet those and be licensed. So AAPC wouldn't license me. It's the state that does that. So in that way, no. What I can tell you is that the members of the executive committee are really, really clear that they are willing to help ACP certified educators and CECs navigate through their, their separate state entities for licensing and for credentialing so that they can be, be counselors.
I think.
But it comes to the state licensing.
Sorry. I think one of the things that AAPC does for its members currently and would do for anybody in ACP that wants to become a pastoral counselor or spiritual, spiritually integrated psychotherapist is what they're calling it, is learning groups. They have cohort learning groups and I think that's really, that's probably their continuing biggest mission is to provide that kind of ongoing learning and training and opportunities for their members and other people. And frankly, they're looking to reach outside of their traditional membership to lots of other categories of folks around the country who are, who want to have some kind of spiritual integration to the practice that they have. So it might be psychologist, it could be, you know, other people. But that's really a group that they're looking to reach out to. And it's also a place, speaking of finances, where they feel like they're going to be able to market their curriculum.
And I would just add that nobody's really talked about any kind of fast track. I think the only, the only track is that we have a collegial relationship where we could coach each other through, but there wouldn't be any shortcuts to it based on previous, I mean, obviously the Master of Divinity or the number of units of training or the, or the, you know, there's lots of component parts that might not, would not have to be repeated. But as everyone said, it's, we're maintaining our separate tracks and our separate identities. That's not, we're not trying to blur that.
So would those cohort learning groups become COPs in ACP?
Potentially. Yeah, potentially.
And I think that's what, that's some of what they've talked about. I don't think they know exactly what kinds of, they haven't determined yet what kind of COPs they would like to have for, you know, their folks or, and other people within ACP that want to join. But I do think that's part of what they're looking forward to by being a part of us.
And then on the flip side, will there be a streamlined process for AAPC folks to become certified educators?
Who wants to grab that one? Again, no, not, not really streamlined. That's the wrong word, I think. I mean, I think there's certainly the opportunity for people who have, meet the certain requirements already to pursue that if they want it and to have lots and lots of colleagues and coaching and support for it, but there'll be no shortcuts to it, if that's the word we're looking for.
There will, there's not going to be reciprocity.
No.
There's just not going to, that's not going to be there.
No. Correct. So, hope that answers. Oh, and hi Tiffany. I didn't see you back there.
All right. We have another question. I'm sorry, I've been forgetting to introduce some of the folks submitting these questions. This one comes from Miguel Santa Maria. He says.
Hi Miguel.
Thank you for all of your work. Using a pros and cons approach, and as you have been meeting with the leadership with AAPC, what is the downside or potential limitations of going forward with this consolidation?
Good question. Hi, former secretary, and I hope you're well. Thank you for all your service. I, truthfully, honestly, in all these conversations, I cannot really find a downside. One of the ways we've been looking at this is kind of like a trial drug for a, for a very, very bad disease. AAPC will go out of business, period. Now, that's not a horrible thing, you know, maybe some things do need to go out of business. So that's not like, oh my God, we have to save them. But the point is, that would be the worst thing that could happen. This is a, this is, even as a merger, even if we vote to go ahead and do it, which I think if we don't, we, we won't really know what's going to happen because a lot of this, a lot of these questions that people have written in about the structure and the finance and all these things, some of them can't really be answered yet. So I think that there's not a lot of risk financially. The team that is going to have to do the work is, is the staff and the boards of these two groups and we don't feel worried about it. And it's not that we don't feel worried because we're going to offload it on everybody. We think it's doable and we think it's definitely worth the experimentation, especially as a sort of creative effort and especially as a sort of honoring of both our collective histories. There are a lot of people, a lot, not a lot, but there have been several people, older folks in both organizations who were members of both or who were members of one or the other who've been emailing us and saying, wow, this is so cool. It's about time. Why did we ever have separate, you know, identities? Of course, we're cousins and we had our own rooms, but why didn't we live in the same house? And so I really, I would say we've had a hard time coming up with a real downside. I mean, we can all catastrophize, but in terms of real risk, I don't, I can't think of one.
One of the possibilities too is that, that for, for all of us, it is, it is sort of a test run on how we might be able to integrate more with our strategic partners. So the folks that we work directly with and closely with that have, we have relationship with, it's, it's, how might this work in the long run for more of us to be together and have a consolidated voice?
So I'm going to say, I don't know Miguel, but I think of this as, as a stopper for us. But obviously, when two organizations try to consolidate, you're going to have bumps along the way. And I think we should, we, we've talked about that. I think we expect that. I think that it's less difficult, it's going to be less difficult on our end than it is going to be for AAPC members who really are having to make a transition to a different kind of identity. They're not, they're not necessarily losing their entire identity, but it, but clearly, you know, this is not, we're not naming the organization AAPC. The organization is ACP and they are, they're joining us. We're not joining them. And so I think the difficulties will be more for them in terms of making the transition. At the same time, I'm with Amy. I think almost, you know, probably 98% of the feedback that we've heard and that AAPC has heard has been very, very positive. I think they don't want to lose their, their groupness, I guess I would say. I don't think they want to, it's not that they don't want to let go of being AAPC. I think they don't want to lose their organization and their relationships with each other. And this is a way to sustain that and to add something to us. Are we going to have some hiccups along the way? I'm sure we will. I think we're trying to anticipate those. And in terms of the work that it's going to add to the national office, we're already in the process, if this all goes forward, of hiring someone who will be on the staff, who will be funded through the funds that AAPC brings into this organization to take care of the work that's going to be needed for membership and communication and all the other things. But, you know, is everything going to be absolutely smooth? Of course not. But I think we've got enough people at the table, both from them and on our side, to work through any bumps. So I'm kind of with Amy. I don't see any huge downsides other than just the natural bumps that are going to come with transition and change.
I've had some, you know, in working with the executive committee of AAPC in recent months, weeks, some of, some folks are really having a grief experience that they have been grieving the potential loss of their association.
Yeah.
Just like I would if something were happening to us. And so I, I think we can help inform ourselves about that, that this is a grief experience for them in some ways. And I've also had colleagues from my area who have been in past AAPC folks and who are still practicing pastoral counselors but have not been members of AAPC and said, you know what, I may join ACP since this is happening. So for some folks, it's a grief experience, like when we let go of the regions. And for some folks, it's a promise of potential. So I think if we can keep both those things in balance and understand that, we can, we can all be better, I think. It can be easier for us all.
So this isn't really a question, but we have a comment from Dixie Lehman. She said, I lived in Canada in which Cape never separated. She had CP units in both the hospital and a pastoral counseling CP center. And when she moved back to the United States, it was strange to learn that these two groups were separate. So she agrees with that they'll, what has already been said and that coming back together will only make us stronger.
Cool.
Thank you Dixie.
Comment from Dixie.
Thank you.
And so, oh, one more from Randy Shone. What are some ways that our ACP centers can speak to our administrators about the merger?
Hmm, that's a good question. I don't, I guess I would say it totally depends on where you are and why you would need to speak about the merger. I mean, I don't think this is going to be on the front page of the New York Times. No offense to any of us, but it just depends on what, where you were. I can't imagine my, my institution's going to care. Maybe you could be more specific about what, what you're thinking about or maybe the two of you have a better.
Could I? I was just going to say, I, I think that it will be something that I'll talk about in my organization, simply to note the strengthening of, of the accrediting organization that we are, you know, have, have brought in these, however many members it's going to be, let's say it's 600 or something. So we're 600 stronger and we have this additional curriculum component that this group is going to bring to us that I think is going to enhance what we're teaching and what we bring. So from that standpoint, that's how I'm going to talk about it with my administration. I don't think they're going to, they probably aren't going to bring it up to me because I don't think they're going to know anything about it. It's going to be something I'm going to report to the person I direct, I, I report to and, you know, talk about it as a strengthening of the, of our center.
You know, I, I know this is anathema to say, but I don't think we're all that special among professional organizations.
They're, oh, it's femur!
There are nursing organizations.
Yeah.
That band together.
Yep.
For, for strength and support.
Yep.
So I think there are lots, this is not unusual and I think that it really will make us better and stronger.
Randy has a follow-up question to that. If we are going to be helping educate or change our, change our curriculum, so if we are going to be helping educate or change our curriculum, how will we justify our time?
We are not doing that. That's the answer.
They, we're not going to change our curriculum, I don't think. We may enhance our curriculum based on some of the things that they bring to us, but we're not going to change our standards. We're not going to change the outcomes. We're not going to, none of that changes. I think it could be an enhancement, but it's not changing our curriculum. We say they have, and they, they call it a spiritually integrated curriculum for psychotherapy. And what, where that comes from basically is they have for so long, even as pastoral counselors, kept their spirituality out of their engagement of their clients and have not felt the freedom to encourage that. And their clients are now beginning to ask about spiritual things and their own spiritualities. And so now with a spiritually integrated psychotherapeutic curriculum, they're going to train the, the counselors and psychotherapists about how to effectively and ethically.
Responsibly.
Responsibly integrate spirituality into the care of that client. Those clients are asking for it. And so they're developing a curriculum for them that we might be able to use some of the stuff from.
Right. That's what I'm thinking.
Outfits.
That, yeah, not that our curriculum or standards or outcomes are going to change, but that we're going to have more resources for doing the work that we do and teaching.
We have a question from one of the attendees that are requesting to talk. This is Sandra. We have a question from one of the attendees. They're requesting to talk. This is Sandra Casey. Sandra?
Oh, she's muted.
Sandra? Yep.
She's muted.
Yeah.
Unmute yourself.
Yeah.
It's not working.
You probably can't. She might be on her phone or something. If you're not at a computer.
All right. Well, let's go to a question then from Jonathan Ball. Is there any information you can share with us about possible governance structure following the merger? What would the board look like? Committees, commissions, et cetera?
Well, our board, they would, so their membership would be, their members would be eligible to nominate themselves or be nominated to the leadership committee for, for any of our, for the board, to run for the board, just like anybody else. They will probably have their own, you know, psychotherapy education commission. They'll have to work that out. Those will be their own. Our own, our commissions and committees will not change to absorb a member of AAPC. We will still conduct business the same way we always have and probably pretty separately. Now, the membership can, can get involved and run for committees and, and talk to, you know, depending on, the leadership development team can, can receive applications from people who are, for whatever reason, wanting to be on certain commissions or committees, but they would still have to be voted upon. And there's no automatic, we're not merging committees and commissions. I hope that answers the question.
And I want to say, can I, the, the leadership development committee doesn't just take applications. They take applications and then they vet every applicant.
Yeah.
And people who aren't qualified, or there's some kind of, they fit better somewhere else, those people don't, the, the leadership development committee sets up those dockets.
And then they get voted upon. So
Right.
But we don't put forward, they don't put forward a, a docket that they don't feel confident of and haven't vetted.
Right. I think one thing that would be helpful is, is at least as we've talked about it thus far, we are not anticipating making another place on the board for an AAPC member.
Right.
The board will stay exactly as it is. These folks will come on and become members of ACPE. And as people, we have rotations off of the board and the leadership development is looking for people to fill that. Any of the folks that have come on board, any ACPE member, which would include them at that point, could, you know, apply to do that, to be on the board. And they would get vetted, just like Melissa said. But we're not anticipating, like, changing the number of members of the board or anything like that.
And there's no automatic, there's no ex officio AAPC slot.
Randy Shone's asking, is the board the only means of representation for AAPC members? I think the answer, they are, what, they're, as members, can serve on any commission or committee.
There'll be only one board. Is that what the question is?
He said, is it the only means that they would have representation would be on the board?
On the, on the board and, and on our committees, you know, as they become members and as they apply and go through the leadership development committee.
I mean, they'll have their, does he mean in terms of ACPE? I, I'm not sure I understand the question. But there's business related to certi, okay, go ahead, Melissa.
Well, I was going to say, if the concern is around certification, people can't be on certification that, that haven't done CPE and aren't certi.
That aren't certified educators.
Right.
So they're not going to, AAPC people are not suddenly going to be on the, you know, certification.
They're, they're busy people. They've got their own committees and commissions. So, yeah.
And there is going to be a specific commission for them, so that they can do some things that they, they need to do for themselves.
But one board.
Right, one board. And, and I wouldn't feel comfortable applying to be on their commission. I don't have that training.
Yeah.
So Sandra Casey apologizes for the technical difficulties. So she's sending her question. Her question is, are you able to share an example of some of the spiritually integrated psychotherapy curriculum?
That's a good question. It's just being developed. Um, so there's a counselor out of Asheville, Russell Siler Jones, full disclosure, an old, old friend of mine. He is taking, he's one of the people very, very involved in taking the lead. I think he's a former regional director in the southeast for AAPC and has been real involved and has been a psychotherapist in the Asheville area for 20 some years or more. And, you know, exactly what Melissa said, is looking to meet the needs of systems. He teaches in, in a university hospital setting where he, he has a lot of overlap between CPE students and psychotherapy students. And he just thinks there's real, real fruitful ground there for, for offering a, a way for these folks to integrate some of their own spirituality, as, as Melissa said very well. The specifics of it, we do not know, but I think it's already, you know, he's already working on it. I, I don't know that he would be against talking to somebody about it.
I think they're, I actually think they're a little farther on, they're, on the spiritually integrated psychotherapy, they're doing pilot groups. They're starting pilot groups like in the next few months. So the curriculum for that will be out there. We haven't seen it yet. But they're, they're already, they've got some educators that are trained and they're piloting it this year. They have some other pieces to that curriculum that they're still developing, but they've got their, I guess what I think of is their core curriculum started. I'm sure they're willing to, to show it to us.
Well, I mean, I, you know, as we say that, I'm guessing they'd be willing. I, I don't know if they want to spread it far and wide, if they don't know. I mean, we're sort of.
Until they pilot it, yeah.
Yeah, until they pilot it and until we see where this sort of dating relationship is going.
Well, maybe till they incorporate it, I mean, or whatever you do with it.
Yeah, they may not, yeah. But it's worth asking. Thanks.
So she has a follow, Sandra's follow-up question regarding the same thing. If an ACP member and a licensed therapist, will you be offered the same opportunity to become an ACP psychotherapist and certified trainer as current AAPC members?
No. No, without the licensing, you have, they, therapists have to be licensed by the state they practice in. As a CPE educator in the state of Ohio, I cannot be a therapist. I never will. If I want to become a therapist, I got to go train to be a therapist. So no. There's no reciprocity in that way.
And they're not, they are not, they're not certifying anybody anymore. They don't have, they don't do certification. They're basically joined together in what I think of as learning cohort groups. But they're not certifying one another to become psychotherapists. That has to be done individually. It's an individual license through everybody's state. So there's no way for ACPE to offer that to our members.
You know, Melissa mentioned nursing, and I think of it like the AMA. I mean, doctors join, you know, doctors join groups, but they have different specialties, and they don't practice each other's specialties without a whole bunch more training, and then more testing, and then more.
Right. And the certification, my understanding that the certification that AAPC anciently did was that after someone had become a therapist and had done some more work, then they could potentially be certified by committee board, kind of like us, to train or to be the supervising person for someone who was training. So that was where that certification thing was, in my understanding, in AAPC. That if you were certified as a quote diplomat, right, wasn't that the highest one?
Mm-hmm.
Diplomat, then you could oversee the final clinical training of another therapist who still had to be under supervision in some way. So they don't do that anymore.
Randy's giving us a little bit clarification. He said his
Oh, good.
question was not about serving on committees, but how will the needs of AAPC members be addressed?
They'll still have their own committees and commissions, and they'll have a staff person to help with organizing things. And they'll still have, I mean, they'll have lots of, they'll have committees of practice. They'll have ways of, they just won't have a board of directors. They'll just be a subsidiary of ACPE, and they'll have their own room in the house. I don't know how more, how much more specific to be.
Yeah, I, I want to be careful. I, I wouldn't say that they're going to be a subsidiary of us, because that makes it sound like we've got these parallel tracks. They're, they're going to just be members of us. I think part of what you're asking, Randy, is, I don't know that we can look totally into the future and see. I think they will be, as they join with us, probably over time, you know, realizing, oh, we need this, we need that, what can, how can we create that? So I think there's going to be some open-endedness and some creativity to this. I do know that they're already very excited about having communities of practice. And I think that's really where they're going to get the most of their needs met, because that's really what they're doing now. I mean, their, their organization right now is not certifying. They're basically, they offer education and collegiality to one another. And that's what they're really trying to develop, is to have groups where folks can continue to have that kind of deep collegiality that, as they expressed it to us, they feel like really is what seasons them as practitioners.
One of the things that I think is going to happen, and we're actually going to do it at some point soon, is that it may become, it will become a very regular thing where our conferences include both groups.
Yeah.
So that keynote speakers speak to both groups, and then there are breakout groups around certain things that pastoral counselors will be more interested in and certified educators will be more interested in. So that's how I see their needs being met, along with the communities of practice that they have and that they form, and that form between the two groups organically.
I mean, they have contracted before for regional meetings. They have, there's a certain places in the country where there's a more active group than others. And so they've already contracted with, you know, with ACPE to help organize some of those things before. And that's gone really well. And as, as everyone has said, they've got their, they're bringing their own money with them and being able to hire someone. And if over time their membership fees don't keep pace, they'll have separate, separate budgeting. And if their membership fees of those particular members don't keep pace, if there's not enough members to, to help fund the things they want to do, they, we won't do it. We won't underwrite big, big meetings for folks to have. We will, don't do that for our own members. We're not going to do it for them.
Catherine Higgins asks, what will the dues be for the folks coming to ACPE from AAPC?
Short answer is more than what they've been paying.
Yeah. That's right. I don't know that that's finalized. I think we've been talking about it a lot. What's fair, especially given that a lot of them are self-employed and what they pay for this and that, and is it the same?
What we pay. I actually think, we, we have proposed, and I'm, I'm gonna, I should know this off the top of my head, but, and I'll.
It was actually published in the letter that went out.
It was. I actually think that the, that their fees are going to be for the spiritually integrated psychotherapist category, something like 200, I want to say it's either 200 or 250. And the reason it's less than a certified educator is because we recognize that they are already paying very stiff licensure fees that we are not having to pay. And they also have some other professional fees that they have to pay generally. And so we really wanted to take into account the fact that, you know, they're, you know, me as a, as a certified educator, the $500 that I pay, that's it for me. I don't have to pay a separate licensure fee. I'm, you know, that kind of thing. But they are. And so we, it's still more than what they were paying generally. And they had, they had a fee structure across the country that was similar to what we had when we had regions. So there were differences, have been differences among their regions. So this will be a change for them to come to one, one consolidated fee that anybody in the country that is a spiritually integrated psychotherapist pays. And then they had, there's another fee structure for their students. I think it's like 100 bucks or something like that. But again, recognizing that they're all having to pay additional licensure fees. And so that's, that's how we came up with that. Just like, just like with us, of course, you know, as this rolls out and we see from year to year how much the expenses really are, then, you know, we'll make adjustments as we need to, to make sure that we're covering the cost of what they need to offer to the spiritually integrated psychotherapists.
Plus, many of them don't have institutions helping things like their license.
Right, right. They're almost all independent practitioners.
Yeah.
Coy, sorry.
They pay for, they pay for space, they pay their fees. They have all kinds of things. So I apologize for being flippant about that. They are going to pay more than what most of them have paid in the past, but it's not going to be as much as we, as certified educators.
Coy Colacott asks, how might a merger impact our national conference? Or would it?
I hope it does. I, I'd like to think they would come. I think people are excited about, you know, like Melissa said, like different workshops, different speakers that would speak to the bigger picture of spirituality and the culture and the world we're in and the, and the context that we're in. I hope it'll bring more people. They could still have separate, you know.
Breakout sessions.
Yeah. But I hope it will. The more the merrier.
Kevin Crowder says, hello friends, thank you for your hard work. I am struck by the us and them tone of the conversation. And he wonders, what will it take for AAPC and ACPE to become us?
I think the vote. I think the vote will, will make us us. I mean, I, I've kind of been trying to talk about us, and then it sounds like I'm jumping the gun and I'm pushing my weight around and I've already made the decision. And it's not up to me. So I think the vote will do that, I hope. I would love that to happen. I've got lots and lots of old connections with that, with people in that organization. And I just think there's so much richness, including you, Kevin, my old good buddy. And I think, I think it's exciting. I, I hope we can start saying us really soon.
I think it's a process, though. I mean, just like anything, you know, we'll, you know, I, I guess it's a little bit like getting married and figuring out what the identity is. And so I think that the vote will definitely kind of be our trigger and our starting place. And then we'll live into moving from us and them to us-ness, or, yeah.
Us and us.
Us and us, yeah.
So regarding the vote, Jonathan Ball says, he's unclear, what is the vote on the 30th for? Is a vote to keep talking, or is it a final vote to merge?
Vote to consolidate.
Can I say, what the vote that ACPE members are, the vote that AAPC members are taking is to dissolve AAPC and join ACPE.
Right.
The vote that we're asking ACPE members to take is, you're basically giving your opinion and direction to the board, to the ACPE board, about whether you think that having AAPC join with us is a good thing.
All right. I think we have time for one final question. It's from Sandra Casey again, regarding the licensing. So maybe we can get some clarification. I understand that AAPC is not licensing. The state does that. I'm referring to the line, in quotes, "Those who eventually become trainers of the soon-to-be-released curriculum will be eligible in the future to become ACPESIT trainers." Can you explain this?
Uh, I think I can. So that's one of the things that we talked about is that, when, when it says that they will become eligible, it simply means that if those folks who are going to be considered educators in AAPC wanted to become certified ACPE educators, that they could begin that process. And we have, if I'm not mistaken, in our new certification, we are, we have we are, we have some pathway, not necessarily an easier pathway, but we have a pathway now for people from um, and maybe I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I think we have a pathway now for people who can become ACP educators from other organizations or, we've got something going like that. So I don't think that what they're saying in their deal is that there's going to be, you're, you're an, you're an ACP, I mean, AAPC or spiritually integrated psychotherapy educator and that makes you an ACP educator. No, they're just saying that that's the group of people that might want to become ACP educators. And we hope that they will because we need more ACP educate. We need more certified educators. And we think that that might be a likely group of people who would want to become um certified educators. But they would have to go through certified education, educator training.
Yeah. I think it's, I think you're right, Linda. I think it had more to do with that being a logical pool of people who.
Right.
Interested, but there's, again, there's no fast track.
Right.
No skipping over anything. No, not at all.
Well, we are just about out of time and we have answered all the questions in the queue. So, do you like to wrap this up, Amy?
Well, I think I'm excited about this. I'm glad we have two more. I think the people that didn't feel like they got their questions answered, we didn't get to all the ones that were written in. Um, I think some people have asked, they still don't really get what AAPC is, AAPC is and blah, blah, blah. I think just you got to read, look them up, uh, talk to somebody who knows about somebody who knows them. Um, that would be my, my best advice. I don't think in another hour-long town hall, we're going to be able to fully explain who, all of who and what they are and what they do. It's a, it's an old organization like ours, because they've been around a long, long time, a very historic organization. So I think I'm not going to, probably not going to take those on today or or the next time. Um, but I'm excited that we have two more.
And I'll just add that we're going to continue to publish things in the newsletter and weekly through the month of January leading up to the vote, addressing the questions that come in. So if you do have questions that just come to your mind now, please send them to webmaster@acp.edu and we'll continue to publish these and address them in the ongoing town halls.
Thank you for your questions and.
Yeah.
End it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.